Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It's time for us to start the proper city council meeting for Tuesday, May 21st, 2013. Ask that you stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for our invocation.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's the prayer. Oh, grace of God, we come now, Lord, as honored as we know how. Truly want to say thank you for many blessings that you bestowed upon each and every one of us. You blessed us, oh Lord, even when we didn't deserve it. We come now, Lord, asking you to direct our tongues and direct our minds in the decisions that we make concerning the business of this city and your people. We come, oh Lord, even further, right now, Lord, with sorrow in our heart and asking you, oh Lord, to lift up those people who have been touched by storms and loss of homes and loss of loved ones. We know that during this time of discomfort, oh Lord, you are still a comforter. And we ask that you comfort in a mighty way. Be everything that they need you to be. And not only there, Lord, be with those who are bereaved in our city and in our town and in our state. Now, Lord, as we leave here tonight, we ask that you will direct us safely to our destination. And we give you the glory, we give you the honor, we give you the praise. In your name we pray. Amen. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Counselor Striplin.
Here.
Counselor Wood.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Sterns.
Here.
Counselor Chambly.
Here.
Counselor Bowles.
Here.
Counselor Boone.
Here.
Character trait of the money's attendance showing the work of a person or task by giving my undivided attention. Very good character trait. A notice in our audience tonight, we have Representative Beckman. It's good to see you, sir. Thank you for all that you do for us. I'm sorry, we have public hearing. I just got that up here, so... At this time, we're going to backtrack. We have one item of resolution to grant restaurant liquor license for Judy Elizabeth Ekman and Randy Joseph Ekman of Sunny Hill Prattville Incorporated doing business as Fox's Den. Anyone here to speak on behalf of this resolution? Anyone to speak against it? No one to speak in favor, no one far? I'm going to close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to close?
Motion.
Have a motion, or have a second?
Second.
Public hearing is closed. This item is on our agenda, and I'll resume now to our agenda. We have approval of the minutes from the meeting, May 7th, 2013. We have a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor of approving those minutes, signify by raising your right hand. Those minutes are approved. At this time, we have comments from persons present regarding tonight's agenda. If you will, come forward if you have any item to discuss on tonight's agenda. Mayor, do you have a report for tonight?
Yes, and if I might have a little privilege, like I said, Representative, if he might come up. While he's coming up, I'd like to direct your attention to the microphone. There's a little cooperation of a couple of departments to go from our wireless microphones to our wired microphone right here, so we don't have to deal with the batteries anymore. But Planning and City Clerk's office, both of them, were able to find funding to move forward with this one. But thank you for your work.
Thank you. Paul Beckman, 1803 Tara Drive over in Prattville. I wanted to come talk to y'all. I haven't had an opportunity to come while y'all are in session, because we were in session. I know y'all have been reading a lot of things as far as the newspaper was concerned, but I've enjoyed working on this last project with you. I know a lot of y'all may not have understood as far as the difficulty, as far as the... even though it was only draft beer, it was very difficult, believe it or not, to get such a simple bill through. I hope that it brings you economic development in this area. I promoted it in reference to that. Saying that, it was enjoyable, but it was a lot of work. It took a lot of encouragement, and I'm sure a lot of y'all made phone calls to myself and other representatives. Saying that, that was one good issue that happened. The second issue that happened that is in reference to... y'all have heard me talking about the Joanne Wilmar bill, which is basically an amber alert for the prisoners that escaped within the area. It passed last night at about two minutes till 12:00. We had real good help with Mr. Taylor on that. We had people on the Democratic Party that basically came forward, Hank Sanders, Roger Bedford, Vivian Figures. So those were individuals that really came forward and helped as far as the Democratic Party, which I'm not accustomed to working with, but I worked with the Democratic Party, and we got that bill passed. And what that does, as y'all recall, that we had an escaped convict from Frank Lee over in Elmore County, and they essentially got out and were out there for three days, and they executed Joey Wilmar in a robbery attempt. And nobody knew that he was even out of prison. So now we have an amber alert that goes into effect within this area when the governor signs the bill, and he signed the bill today. We'll have a ceremony on that issue with Mrs. Wilmar over there. As you recall, this was in Pine Level. And the other third thing that I think was very, very, very good policy is concerned, even though regardless of what you read in the paper, was in reference to our education. We were able by overriding the governor's veto, and I'll explain how that... we were able to save Elmore $1.3 million and almost $800,000 for our Togga County school system. And what that really is about was, we passed a bill back in February, which was House Bill 84, which essentially gave school choice to the students. Now, Togga County doesn't need to worry about it, because they don't have a failing school. Elmore County doesn't have a failing school. But this bill was basically allowing students that were trapped in a failing school to get a better education. When you have 40% of your dropout rate in the state of Alabama, you have 63% of incarcerations that don't have a high school education, and you have over 100 schools that are failing, you have to do something. So we initiated this bill, and the governor signed it. He was the one that basically wrote the program for the scholarships and the tax credit. And of course, as you're well aware, there was a mistake on that particular bill, and what started that bill was essentially that, as you recall, the bill passed on a Thursday night. We were supposed... we all signed off on Bill Number 7. On that night, they didn't... they closed the journals. Next Friday, if you recall, there was an injunction that was filed in state court, and Charlie Price ruled that it was wrong on Tuesday, and therefore, the bill never got signed. And then after the injunction was lifted, the clerk basically transmitted Bill Number 8, not Bill Number 7, which we voted on. And Bill Number 7 basically gave the power to the superintendents to either to accept or not accept students coming in from the county. So essentially, this bill yesterday that was voted on to override was a bill that essentially would say that would give the power to the superintendents, that essentially would allow them to basically deny students coming from Montgomery, Shelby County. In other words, use our tax dollars based on our tax base and everything else, which would have a detrimental effect. So a lot of people... I was all in favor for the governor's bill. The governor's bill wanted to put it off for two years, but the problem with that was Dale Marsh and the Senate basically said it wasn't going to even... if the governor's bill passed in the House, it wasn't going to come out of the basket. It was not going to come out of the basket. That means the bill would die, and you would have the bill in place that was signed into law in February or March. So essentially, we overrode the governor's veto and referenced that for the simple reason that it gave Spence Agee here and Jeff Langham in Elmore County the power to protect their schools, no more, no less. That was the only way to do it. So we saved the county, Brian Taylor and myself, on getting that bill done. We would have liked to have gone along with the governor. I have no problem with waiting two years to implement it, but the problem is, if we'd have done that, Dale Marsh would have never got it out of the bag, and then therefore, Mr. Agee would have been forced to accept the students, and it would have cost the Togga County school system a lot of money. And so that was the purpose of it. Those are the three things that really occurred that affected the Togga County. I don't think anybody has told you all that, but I appreciate also what the work that y'all do and the communication that has now been established with my office since y'all have been elected in the last two years. I've enjoyed seeing some of you all over the State House. I've enjoyed talking to you on the phone, and I hope that we can continue that relationship. And I want to thank you for letting me speak to you. Thank you, Representative Beckman. Does any council member have any questions for Representative Beckman? Comments? Counsel Bowles.
Representative Beckman, how are you doing tonight?
I'm doing good.
I really want to tell you thank you for going to bat for everything you did for Prattville this time around. I'm hoping I can get with you next week or so and talk about two pieces of legislation for next February. We did lots. The way y'all control how we do it, you can make our life a lot easier if you tweaked it a little bit. We'll go over that. And also a business-friendly bill where we would have a business license fee, where if your home is here, you pay for it in Prattville, but every city has to honor it.
Okay.
And I would appreciate some time in the next couple of weeks, and we'll sit down and talk about those.
And I have no problem on that. The only thing that I would request as far as the council is concerned... we will maybe be meeting. Our session starts the second Tuesday in January. We start early this next session, and due to the fact that election season gets geared up for us, that some of us that are running. And the third thing is, is that I would ask when y'all do pass something, I think Mr. Taylor requires it, I don't so much, but that you put it in a resolution so we have something there for you. I think when we want to do something, we want to make sure that the communications is straight across the line, that we understand that. But I have no problem doing what you suggest, Mr. Bowles.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And actually, I was wanting to touch base a little bit about House Bill 239, which is a draft beer bill. And reiterate that, and if you remember, council had asked our state representative and state senator through a council resolution to grant... to have the state grant the city of Prattville permission, allowing the council body to vote on draft beer sales. Well, HB 239 draft beer has passed... did pass the Senate yesterday and is now awaits Governor Bentley's signature so it can come back before this body. I think this is good news for economic development, as several restaurants are considering space here in Prattville, waiting on this draft beer, according to several different sources on that. I do want to touch briefly on some other events that we have had, and one of them, we're honored to be able to assist our neighboring city, Montgomery, due to high water levels on the Alabama River. Montgomery asked for our assistance with their Bass Tournament, and it went off without a hitch. They're very complimentary for our facilities, Cooters Pond. If you haven't been to Cooters Pond lately, drive on out there. It's a very nice place. Laura Lee Boone and myself, Counsel Boone and myself, went there recently to look at some of the views that are, in my opinion, breathtaking from several different viewpoints. But if you haven't been out there lately, please, please take the time to go out there. But Cooters Pond is definitely a diamond in the rough that I hope we will make quite a few strides for in the near future. But moving right on along, the Bass Masters Association was very complimentary of everything, and they're actually now following us on Twitter now. But I do want to give a thanks to Kelly Cook, Chief Brown, Chief Thompson, and all their staff, Urban Management, for all their hard work in making the city of Prattville look good at a moment's notice. The perception of Prattville is viewed very positively through this event, mostly because of our employees and their dedication to our city. So I do want to say again, thank you for that. LPGA also is sort of old news, I guess, now, but LPGA also had an announcement last week that the love affair with Prattville will continue. They're coming back to our city in 2014, as of right now, the exact date has not been set, but they're still working on that. Memorial Day, as we all know, is right around the corner. On Monday, we'll be joining the VFW and the American Legion for their annual re-flaying ceremony at Togga County Courthouse on Monday, May 27th, at 11:00 a.m. Also, we'll be having our second annual retro pool day. A mission, hot dogs and drinks for a quarter for that event. I think everybody knows where the pool is. It's right beside the splash pad. Can you find the pool? Find the splash pad. But at the courthouse, it's 11:00 a.m., so I do hope we can all join in on that one. You know, that's... that, to me, is actually a very special event. I do hope we can meet each other at both of those events, but city offices will be closed. But the Memorial Day is a very special event. You know, we lower our flags at half-staff from sunrise to noon. Having the flag lowered in the morning is a unique custom, which honors more than 1 million men and women who gave their lives and sacrificed for our country. At noon, their memory is raised back by the living, who resolved not to let their sacrifice be in vain, but to rise up in their place and continue the fight for liberty and justice for us all. So please join me for these special events. And I must remind everyone that garbage and trash will not be collected on Monday. All Monday and Tuesday garbage will... routes will be collected on Tuesday, May 28th. Normal schedule will resume on Wednesday, May 29th. As I mentioned earlier about our House bill there, you know, that I think that will be a boost in our economic development around here, and only time we'll see and tell on that, that after Governor Bentley does sign that out. But I'd also like to commend the council in taking the training that we received beginning this weekend and it continued through this week. I think it shows dedication to this city, from this body and myself, that education is a way for us to continue to move this city forward. And with that, Mr. President, that ends my report.
Thank you, Mayor. Does any council member have any questions or comments for the mayor? Thank you.
If not any on that, I would ask that we do... we are going to go into executive session.
Yes, sir. I will be asking for the council to vote on that at the end of this agenda. This time, we have reports from council and special committees. Counsel Striplin.
No, sir.
Counsel Brown.
No, sir.
Counsel Sterns.
No, sir.
Counsel Chambly.
No, sir.
Counsel Bowles.
No, sir.
Counsel Boone.
No, sir.
This time, we have a report on the status of the City Finance Committee finances from our financial director.
Provided a packet to everyone, the financial information, this is for the month of April, which you'll see before you. The first sheet, as always, is the revenue report. You will see that most of the items on the revenue report are 50% through the year. You will see that as far as our budget, we've already achieved 70% of our budgeted funds, so that's very positive. You'll also notice that year-to-date, we've received $1.1 billion more than we received last year at this point. Of course, part of that is due to the gas tax funds that were received, the state trust fund money that was received. The next sheet is the tax breakdown comparison for all of the rental tax, sales tax, use tax for the month of April. Next set of sheets is the April expense report. Most of all the departments are right in line where they should be as far as we are through the year. I know I spoke about this a couple of months ago, about the work comp bill coming through, and you'd see a big jump in the benefits expense. We actually just got a check, a refund check from them. They completed their work comp audit, and we got a $23,000 refund, so you'll see that come back and reduce that expense for this next month. But as I said, most everybody is right in line where they should be for their budget. Let's see. The next sheet is the wastewater enterprise fund income statement. The wastewater enterprise fund is doing very well this year. You will see that year-to-date, we are in the black by $369,000, and right on track as far as budgeted. We actually have received more revenue than would have been budgeted for this point in the year, and expenses are lower than they would be at this point in the year, so that's always positive. Next sheet is the sanitation enterprise fund income statement. Again, just as with the wastewater enterprise fund, they are running in the black, which is always positive, and starting to build reserves. As you know, we approved two trucks for the sanitation department, loaders, and those are being assembled right now, so it's helping build reserves to pay for those capital items. The next sheet is the bank balances for April 2011, 2012, and 2013, comparative for all of the bank statements for the city. You will see that April 30th, 2011, the cash balance was $997,281. As of April 30th, 2013, it was $12,098,948. And the last sheet is the citywide accounts payable and debt balances. You will see, and just like the cash balance, this is for April 30th, 2011, 2012, and 2013, and you will see that the accounts payable and debt balance as of April 30th, 2011 was That balance now at April 30th, 2013 is $51,198,080.55, so more than a $10 million decrease, which is, again, positive.
Let me ask Ms. Mosley.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Does any council member have any questions or comments for Mr. Mosley? Thank you. We're moving to our agenda for tonight. The first item is an ordinance to surplus one vehicle from the police department. Counsel Chambly, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Be it ordained by the city council of the city of Prattville, Alabama, as follows: "That the vehicle listed below is hereby declared surplus of the police department and is to be removed from the inventory of said department. A 1999 Ford Crown Victoria. Be it further ordained that the city council instructs the mayor to sell said vehicle on govdeals.com and that proceeds be deposited in the general fund." So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion by Council Chambly to accept this ordinance. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. This ordinance must have the rules suspended unanimously. In order to be considered tonight, we have a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
We have a motion to suspend. We have a second.
Second.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Rules have been suspended. This ordinance is now open for discussion. Will there be any discussion on this ordinance? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. This ordinance passes. Resolution Number 2 is to grant a retail beer and table wine off-premise only to Stephanie Dawn Dixon and Courtney Hicks of Queen Meats &amp; Wine LLC doing business as Queen Meats &amp; Wine. Counsel Sterns, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas Stephanie Dawn Dixon and Courtney Hicks of Queen Meats &amp; Wine LLC, Queen Meats &amp; Wine, have obtained a business located at 207 Highway 82, Bypass West, in Prattville, Alabama, which is a retail store. And whereas the owners of the said business have applied for an off-premise retail beer and table wine license, now therefore be resolved that the city council of the city of Prattville hereby approves the issuance of an off-premise retail beer and table wine license to the business located at 207 Highway 82, Bypass West, Prattville, Alabama, to Stephanie Dawn Dixon and Courtney Hicks of Queen Meats &amp; Wine LLC, Queen Meats &amp; Wine. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Brown. Be in a discussion on this item. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. And this resolution passes. Resolution Number 3 is to grant a restaurant and retail liquor license for Judith Elizabeth Ekman and Randy Joseph Ekman of Sunny Hill Prattville Incorporated doing business as Fox's Den. Counsel Striplin, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas Judith Elizabeth Ekman and Randy Joseph Ekman of Sunny Hill Prattville Incorporated doing business as Fox's Pizza Den have applied for a retail... for a restaurant retail liquor license at the business located at 164 West Main Street, Prattville, Alabama, 36067, which is a restaurant. And whereas said license will be a new application, and now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville hereby approves the issuance of a restaurant retail liquor license to Judy Elizabeth Ekman and Randy Joseph Ekman of Sunny Hill Prattville Incorporated doing business as Fox's Pizza Den, 164 West Main Street, Prattville, Alabama, 36067. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion by Counsel Striplin. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Sterns. Be in a discussion on this item?
All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. And this resolution passes. Resolution Number 4 is to authorize the hiring of one building custodian to fill a budgeted vacant position in the leisure services department at an annual cost not to exceed $32,413. Counsel Boone, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the city of Prattville Leisure Services Department has a need to hire one building custodian to fill a vacancy in that department, and whereas the city council has adopted a resolution requiring council authorization to fill vacant positions, and whereas the annual cost will not exceed $34,187 for salary and benefits, and whereas this is a budgeted position in the leisure services department. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that up to $32,413 is hereby authorized to be expended for the purpose of hiring one building custodian, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from FY 2013 budget line items, leisure services department/salaries and wages, workers' compensation, retirement, group health insurance, group life insurance, and FICA. Be it further resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that the human resources department is authorized to implement the hiring process as budgeted. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Brown. Will be in a discussion on this item. Yeah, one question for Doug. Maybe you can answer this. In our budget upon this particular item and most of the ones where it's coming up, where it's a hiring position, we have in parentheses, that number in parentheses are the number of people that belong in that position. For instance, building custodian, it has in parentheses, three. This hire here, will that make the third person of that one? And so on, as we go through this? It will? Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. This resolution passes. Resolution Number 5 is to authorize the hiring of one facility maintenance division building maintenance technician, one, to fill a budgeted vacant position, fire department, and annual cost not to exceed $34,187. Counsel Bowles, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the city of Prattville Fire Department has a need to hire one facility maintenance division building maintenance tech, one, to fill a vacancy in that department, and whereas the city council has adopted a resolution requiring city authorized to hire vacant positions, and whereas the annual cost will not exceed $34,187 for salary and benefits, and whereas this is a budgeted position in the fire department, now therefore be resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that up to $34,187 is hereby authorized to be expended for the purpose of hiring one financially... we need to shorten this title. Maintenance Division Building Facility Tech, one, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from FY 2013 budget line item, fire department, salary and wages, warm and comp, retirement, group health insurance, group life insurance, and FICA. Be it further resolved that the city council of the city of Prattville, that the human resource department is authorized to implement the hiring process as budgeted. I so moved.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counsel Boone. Will be in a discussion on this item. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. This resolution passes. Resolution Number 6 is to authorize the hiring of one service maintenance worker to fill a vacant position in the sanitation department at an annual cost not to exceed $31,526. Counsel Striplin, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the city of Prattville Sanitation Department has a need to hire one service maintenance worker, one, to fill a vacancy in that department, and whereas the city council has adopted a resolution requiring city count... requiring council authorization to fill vacant positions, and whereas the annual cost will not exceed $31,526 for salary and benefits, and whereas this is a budgeted position in the sanitation department. benefits, and whereas this is a budgeted position in the sanitation department, now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that up to $31,526 is hereby authorized to be expended for the purpose of hiring one service maintenance worker, one, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from fiscal year 2013 budget line items, sanitation enterprise fund, salaries and wages, workers' compensation, retirement, group health insurance, group life insurance, and FICA. Be it further resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that the human resources department is authorized to implement the hiring process as budgeted. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Sterns. Be in a discussion on this item? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. This resolution passes. Resolution number seven is to authorize to hiring of one service maintenance worker to fill a budgeted vacant position in the urban management department at an annual cost not to exceed $31,526. Counsel Boone, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the city of Prattville Urban Management Department has a need to hire one service maintenance worker, one, to fill a vacancy in that department, and whereas the city council has adopted a resolution requiring council authorization to fill vacant positions, and whereas the annual cost will not exceed $31,526 for salary and benefits, and whereas this is a budgeted position in the urban management department. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that up to $31,526 is hereby authorized to be expended for the purpose of hiring one service maintenance worker, one, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from the FY 2013 budget, line items, urban management department, salaries and wages, workman's comp, retirement, group health insurance, group life insurance, and FICA. Be it further resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that the human resources department is authorized to implement the hiring process as budgeted. Mr. President, I so move.
We have a motion by Counsel Boone. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Chambers. Will be in a discussion on this item? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. This resolution passes. Resolution number eight is to set a public hearing to declare various weed lots to be a public nuisance in order in the abatement for Title XI, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama 1975 as amended. Counsel Chambers, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas an abundance of overgrown grass or weeds is injurious to the public health, safety, and general welfare by providing a breeding ground and shelter for rats, mice, snakes, and mosquitoes and other vermin, may cause the further spread of weeds, may hide debris such as glass or metal that could inflict injury on a person going to such property, and may also pose a fire hazard and respiratory hazard. Whereas Section 1167-1 of the Code of Alabama 1975 as amended permits the city council of the city of Prattville to declare an abundance of overgrown grass and weeds to be a public nuisance, and whereas the Prattville Police Department has inspected the properties at the following addresses and determined that the existence of an abundance of overgrown grass and weeds. 1370 Cooper Avenue, 230 Radburn Way, 403 New Moon Drive, 103 Lilac Drive, 209 Camellia Drive, 211 Camellia Drive, 209 J Street, 1805 Jenny Drive, 1001 Upper Kingston Road, vacant lot on the Black Oak Court and Willow Oak Court, 434 Water Street, 106 Guilford Lane, 518 Jasmine Trail, 102 Gray Drive, 115 Gray Drive, 307 Hunting Ridge Road. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Prattville declares the abundance of overgrown grass and weeds at the above-listed addresses to be a public nuisance, and the owners of said property, as they appear in the records of the Togger County Revenue Commissioner, are ordered to abate the abundance of overgrown grass and weeds, and the owners of said property are ordered to appear before the city council of the city of Prattville at a public hearing at 6:00 p.m. on June 18th, 2013, in Prattville City Hall. Notice of such hearing and copy of this resolution shall be sent by certified mail to owners of said property. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion by Counsel Chambers. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Striplin. Will be in a discussion on this resolution. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. And this resolution passes also. At this time, we will take comments from persons present on any item you come forward. Give your name, court.
I see we have some new council members. My name is Vince Jones. I live here in Prattville, 1134 Perry Dell Loop, and I represent the SummerSlam program. Well, my wife and I do, we started back in 2001 sponsoring a free youth program for the kids. Doesn't cost the parents or the kids anything. Since that time, we started with basketball. As of four years ago, we implemented wrestling to the program. And for the last four years, the wrestling program has been going pretty strong. This Saturday, June 8th, we'll kick off our first program for this summer, which will be the SummerSlam Wrestling Program at Prattville High School. Right now, I don't have any of my paperwork, but I have something in your boxes electronically before the week is out. We don't have a location yet for the basketball tournament for the kids, but as soon as I get that, that'll be in your boxes also. I'd like to invite all of you out so far. I think the only person that have taken me up on that has been the mayor, and I think he's enjoyed himself every time that he's been up there. But I'd like for you to come out and see what the program does for our city and our youth. Anybody have any questions for anything for me? And for all our new council members, nice to meet you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Does anyone have any questions or comments for Mr. Jones? Thank you again for what you do, Vince. Good program. At this time, we have closing comments. Mayor, do you have any closing comments?
No, sir.
Counsel Striplin?
No, sir.
Counsel Brown?
No, sir.
Counsel Sterns?
No, sir.
Counsel Chambers?
No, sir.
Counsel Bowles?
No, sir.
Counsel Boone?
As you have heard, the mayor has asked that we go in an executive session. We will be going in an executive session if this council approves so, to discuss the good name and character of an individual. Approximately time will be about one hour, approximately, or less. We have a motion.
No. We have a motion to go in executive session. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Striplin. All in favor of going in executive session, raise your right hand. We will adjourn for executive session. We will reconvene and adjourn in here. Call the council back to order. Need a motion to come out of an executive session?
Motion.
Have a motion to come out. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor of coming out of executive session, signify by raising your right hand. And the executive session is closed. We've had our final comments for tonight. Our next council meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, June 4th, 2013, at 6:00 p.m. Hope to see all of you all out there at that time. We have a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Meeting is adjourned.